Now, I'll start with a call to order and letting people know. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our city council meeting to order at 6:03 PM for December 1st, 2025. Happy December, and as the December is upon us, so is the snow season. So I'm glad to see people made it safe. It's like a snow globe out there. Pretty fun to see. So, let's see. I'll just let folks know in the audience that the first public, first opportunity for folks to comment on items that are not on the agenda. We do ask that you sign up. There's a signup sheet right out on the table outside of the council chamber doors. We've got 20 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, and then any remaining comments will wait until the end. But then, of course, every action item that we have, there's an opportunity for public comment on those items as well. And we do have some neighborhood council reports this evening. So before we get started with that agenda, if you will, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you very much. And Ms. Trimble, will you please do a roll call for us when you're ready?
All right, I had to rejoin the meeting, beginning with Anderson.
Present.
Basera.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Arlino.
Present.
Prask.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Jones. Absent. Jordan. Absent. Nelson.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Cheryl.
Present.
Busica.
Present.
All right, and we do have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have minutes on the agenda from November 17th for your review and feedback. Does anybody have, any council members have any questions or any changes, suggestions for the minutes that were submitted? Okay, I'm not seeing any, then those will go ahead and remain as submitted. Thank you. And then next, we have item three on our agenda, which is checking in on the committee schedule for this coming Wednesday. Ms. Trimble, detail on the committee schedule this Wednesday?
Nothing out of the ordinary. Nothing has changed since we posted it before. It does have a slightly later start at 10:50, I believe. But other than that, it'll be a regular day.
All right, thank you. Council members, it looks like you do have a council committee schedule up until the end of the day on Wednesday. And then for members of the public, city council committee business for this coming Wednesday can be found on the city council meeting page. You just scroll down to the calendar, and you can find all the committees there, their referrals, the necessary background information for all those committee agendas and all those committee meetings. All right, so we'll move on to item number four, which is special presentations and proclamations. We have two neighborhood council reports tonight. So our first one on the agenda is the Rose Park Leadership Team Report. Please join us up at the podium. I'll turn the microphone on. And if you'll say your name for the record, and looking forward to your report. Thank you. We can, but go ahead and adjust that microphone as comfortable as you need it, too.
Good evening, everyone. The leadership team has been working closely with Stormwater.
Sorry, one more time. I'm gonna have you start over.
Okay.
Sorry about that microphone was on there. And if you'll say your name at the beginning, please.
Is that better?
That's perfect.
Oh, that's perfect. Okay.
Yeah.
So the leadership team has been working closely with Stormwater to brainstorm ideas for the Slant Street Gateway, the two triangles of city-owned land at Franklin Park, Plymouth, and Mount intersection. An earlier improvement plan concept included installing a rain garden. However, the necessary funding did not exist. So Stormwater has since connected the team with the DNRC grant opportunity to help support this project. Team members are actively working on the application. And a next item, a public works and mobility staff member attended the most recent team meeting to share updates on the planned improvements for the Slant Street Gateway, including new sidewalks, boulevards, and treats. So the team is excited to see these new additions. And the Parks and Recreation Board approved of the Capitol Campaign for Honoring Our Heroes at Rose Park. So that's about it.
Well, that's exciting.
Any questions?
One more, your name for the record, please.
Audrey Hayes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Any questions? Any questions for Ms. Hayes? Any comments? Well, it sounds like some exciting projects. Thank you very much for your partnership with the city and the work with our departments and the wonderful projects that you've got going on in your neighborhood there. Excited to see what happens. All right, we have another neighborhood council update, and that is the Farview Patty Canyon Neighborhood Leadership Team Report. Does anybody hear from that neighborhood council, that leadership team? The Farview Patty Canyon Neighborhood Leadership Team? Not seeing anybody in the audience jump up. Don't think that we have anybody online that's raising their hand. They are driving from Farviews. They could be taking it slow, given the weather. Thank you, Claire. All right, well, if they come and join us, we'll go ahead and adjust the agenda. How's that sound? And council members, I know you saw this already, and for members of the public as well. There is an update that is also located on the city council, a written update on the city council agenda. So you can see that there. And it looks like they've been working on improvements to their neighborhood parks in that neighborhood and working, reaching out to neighborhood partners to identify cost-effective options for moving these projects forward. That seems to be a theme across a lot of our neighborhood councils. And then they've been auditing some easements that provide access to neighborhood trails. And that area does have some interesting legacy subdivision easements and access to new parks and trails. So glad to hear they're doing that. I'm excited to hear what they come back with on that. Okay. Well, that does wrap up our special presentations and proclamations this evening. Thank you again for coming down and taking part in local government and your neighborhood by being part of your leadership team with the neighborhood council. And we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. The city council did make an adjustment to the council agenda a few weeks back, where there are two times the public can make general reports from the public on items that are not on the agenda. And this first time on the agenda is a 20-minute period. So I'll help keep track. Every person that wishes to make comment is asked to keep their comments to three minutes or less. We ask that you come up to the podium, the microphone, say your name for the record. I'll help you keep track with this fancy machine up here. And it looks like the first that we have for our public comment on items not on the agenda is Big K Montana. Come on up, Mr. Spitzmacher.
Yes, let's pick up to the end of the council meeting two weeks ago, when Jill Bonney was here to address the council in regards to Black Night Security, which is an advocacy of March 16th and the circumstances that evolved that nobody wanted to see it into a jury trial. As far as I'm concerned, it still sits as to contempt to the fact of the matter of the individuals involved. And that'd be the several weeks up until April 2nd, where they had the means to reconcile. Let's pick up after Jill Bonney. She claims that I was yelling at her? No, I was talking to the eavesdroppers to the fact that she said I needed to fill out a grievance form in regards to the fact that I need to acknowledge to something that's false and malicious intent if I needed to go back to that facility because of the inclement weather. As I said several weeks ago, I don't need to deal with the police department for the facility door and that because it should be oversighted by the sheriff's department for reasons of circumstances. And that's where it would go if it had happened. And it almost possibly could go there for reasons I talked to the staff of the facility. The matter of fact, as I told Jill Bonney, I filled out those grievance forms, and they meant absolutely nothing to her because she never read them. And she said, "We don't have an electronic grievance form." I beg the difference. Mayor Hess and the assistant staff, the mayor Hess, presented me with an electronic grievance form that I haven't gotten to the tablet where it sits at of the email that I originally used, Big K Montana, Spitzmacher. Eventually, I'll get it because those emails are still on file with Google to the fact of the matter. This has been going on for the last two and a half years since January with a specific individual of the facility that's no longer there. I've discovered an inside connection that used to work there of the facility that some of the staff has changed. And far as I'm concerned, the one I regarded of the facility, which is 1110 West Broadway, to make it clear, I don't have much regarding for the fact that they're all clicked together like they're family. But some of the family members have been eliminated, and one of them has worked for Night Security. As I mentioned earlier, he says it's a racial slur. I didn't find that when I researched the fact of the matter for what we're talking about.
Thank you for your comments this evening, Mr. Spitzmacher. All right, next person on the signup sheet is Barbara Pulley. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Barbara Pulley. I've been here before. I'm here because I was reading MRA's September Minutes, where they made a decision to fund a $50,000 feasibility study to pay a consultant, and I think it should be overruled by the city council as soon as possible to save the $50,000. The proposal was passed as a preliminary step for the outdoor multi-season recreational ribbon in Karis Park. This plan for ice skating and roller skating in Karis Park originated in 2020 by the North Riverside Parks and Trails Master Plan. An inexpensive review of Missoula's winter weather patterns for the last 10 years could easily determine that this entire project is a ridiculous waste of money, given our climate change. The cost of an ice rink for two months of winter use when we have Glacier Ice Rink available is another reason to overrule this decision. My first winter in Missoula was in 1963, when we had over a foot of snow with the coating ice that made it look like a white frosting on campus. At that time, U of M had an outdoor ice skating rink, which consisted of an open-air pavilion. It was discontinued in the '60s due to difficulty of keeping the ice cold and/or the lack of interest. Even 60 years ago, Missoula's weather was too warm for an ice rink. It later became a ceramics art building. Marshall Mountain used to provide an after-school skiing program, where their buses would pick up our kids from school directly and take them directly to the mountain. Due to the warm climate, Marshall Mountain could not continue with reduced hours of skiing and the additional cost of snowmaking. Glacier Ice Rink is available, and recently, U of M had a temporary ice rink in the Oval. MRA's project should not be competing with a business in the Missoula Midtown. MRA's mission is to combat blight. This Karis Park project is not a blight situation. The city should not be hurting an existing taxpayer business. In the 1980s, Missoula also had a roller skating arena on South Reserve, which probably could close due to lack of interest, another indication of limited use. I don't know if you ever overruled the MRA's board on their project decisions. I encourage you to save this $50,000 by eliminating the feasibility study. And on another issue in MRA's budget, MRA has excess contingency funds, of which MRA remitted $4,526,350 to the city. Who determines the amount of the remittance? Has this been a standard practice every year? What city departments benefit? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Ms. Pulley. All right, we've got one additional member who has signed up, and Sir Martin, is it Reinbold? Come on up. Thank you. And if you'll go ahead and say your name again into the record, I appreciate that.
My name is Martin Reinbold. I'm here to speak on the parking permit. It's the PPV. I'm unsure what the V stands for. But I'm a homeless man and have been homeless in this town for 17 years. I also agree with programs that help diminish blight, and I'm a proponent of the aggressive panhandling laws. I don't believe that homeless necessarily means bother. It just means lifestyle change, lifestyle different. I don't mind carrying everything I own up into the mountains when the city gets to be too city-like. Recently, I have, I have been permitted with, had been permitted with my camper, my car, and a truck that I'm watching for a friend of mine who is in prison. This permit, after two weeks, when the, let me backtrack just a little. When the permit is issued, there are photographs taken of the site, of the camper, and of the vehicles in question. So there are photographs on file of my camper, my two vehicles, and the winter tires that I had stored underneath my camper out in, on Sandpiper, out in the industrial area by the airport. That's where I was permitted. Two weeks into it, I, well, actually, about a week and a half into it, I was arrested. When I came, or when I was released from jail, I had noticed that my camper and my vehicles were marked for tow by the permit people that I'm going to refer to as code enforcement. When I contacted them, they said that that's what they do when someone goes to jail. Personally, I think that's an invasion of privacy. Their job is to permit someone to have a vehicle somewhere for 30 days. If they go beyond that 30 days, then it becomes their issue to either renew or revoke permission. I believe that the program has merit if it is run fairly and if it is run legally. Currently, my camper has been towed. My truck has been towed. I'm lucky to have my car. I am employed. I will remain employed, and I'm just asking the council to review the actions of the parking permit group, the PPV code enforcement, as they are, they're, in my, in my opinion, they are guilty of harassment. They are guilty of abuse of the law. They're not, they're not obeying the letter of the law and the letter of the code that they function under. They're playing favorites and definitely trying to, they're not trying to reduce blight in a humane manner. Case in point.
Mr. Reinbold, that's three minutes, but thank you very much for coming down with your concerns this evening. Appreciate that. All right, that is all the folks that have signed up. But we do have about 10 minutes left of this public comment period of items that are not on the agenda. If anybody wishes to come on up and make comment on items not on the agenda, you're welcome to do that now. Not seeing any in the audience. I'll just check online here to see if we have anybody online. Anybody online wishing to make public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, not seeing any online then either. Thank you, folks, for coming down tonight to make public comment on items not on the agenda. And I'll go ahead and move on to our next agenda item then. All right. So normally, excuse me, this is public hearing time. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council and the mayor invite community comment. City council holds a public hearing on the item. A member of council makes a motion, and a vote is taken. The public hearing and vote take place on the same night unless there is a reason to hold the vote over to a later date. We have one public hearing this evening, and it's a relatively routine business. It is budget amendments. We have our quarter one budget amendments for fiscal year '26. And we have Finance Director Lee Griffin here to provide that staff report. And so, Lee, when you're ready, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, I am bringing forward, as mentioned, the quarter one budget amendments for the FY '26 budget. And budget amendments come along to adjust spending authority when new revenues, project needs, or timing changes occur, or we identify something that's happened, you know, anything that's happened during the year that we want to get captured within the budget. And city council and the mayor have the authority under Montana Code annotated state law to amend the budget during the fiscal year, as long as we conduct a public hearing and we show what funding sources will pay for any increase in appropriations. This resolution will increase total city revenues by $2,35,515 and budgeted appropriations or expenditures by $2,913,479. We have an exhibit attached to the agenda item that outlines each item that is amending the budget. We have 11 here, and as you can see, we identify the revenue. If it's fund balance, that particular fund has available fund balance to pay for these increase in expenditures. We also show budget carryforwards, and these are prior-year appropriations. There are contracts and projects that were expected to finish up in FY '25 and just didn't get finished, so we carry them forward into our current fiscal year. Got two and a half pages of those. And then at the very end, we have budget transfers, and these move existing appropriations between line items. It's really kind of an accounting exercise, but we want to show these publicly for transparency. And that is the extent of our budget amendments. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Griffin, thank you very much. Any questions from council tonight? Any questions from council? All right, not seeing any questions, and I think we can hear the main motion. President Cheryl.
Great, thank you. I recommend that, I recommend that we approve a resolution for the first quarter fiscal year 2026 amendments to the annual appropriations for the city of Missoula, Montana, as set forth in the fiscal year 2026 budget that increases its total city revenues by $2,35,515 and budgeted appropriations by $2,913,479 in order to recognize additional revenues, activities, and expenses for the fiscal year 2026, incorporate expenditures and projects approved in the FY '26 budget process, which were not captured in the final appropriations resolution, and recognize revenues and expenditure carryforwards for, from FY '25.
All right. Thank you very much. Main motion is made. That means the public hearing is open, and we will open it up for public comment. If there are any members of the public that wish to comment on this agenda item, come on up. All right, not seeing any in the audience. How about online? Any members of the public online wishing to make comment on this budget amendment? All right. Not seeing any public comment, then we'll go ahead and bring it back to council to see if there's any final questions or if there are any comments before we take a vote. Not seeing any, then we can go ahead and do a roll call vote, please, Ms. Trimble.
All right. Voting on this evening's public hearing, the fiscal year 2026 quarter one budget amendments, beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Basera.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Arlino.
Yes.
Prask.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
And Busica.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, folks. And Ms. Griffin, thank you for your report this evening. That wraps up our public hearings, and we have no new business. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda, and then we'll invite community comment on these items before the city council takes a vote. Take it away, Ms. Trimble.
All right. Let me share my screen. Okay, on this evening's consent agenda, we have a motion to ratify accounts payable or checks dated November 25th, 2025 in the amount of $2,804,986.60. We have a motion to authorize the mayor to approve the memorandum of agreement between Arts Missoula and the city for support of the citywide arts in Missoula. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the street maintenance agreement between the city of Missoula and the Montana Department of Transportation for the fiscal years 2026 and '27. We have a motion reappointing Debbie Johnson, Johnston, as a regular member of the health board with a new term beginning January 1st, 2026, and expiring December 31st, 2028. We have a motion to approve a resolution declaring certain city of Missoula property as surplus and authorizing its disposal and/or sale coming from the fire department. We have a motion to approve the attached Brownfields Abatement Agreement for an amount not exceeding $1,951,787 and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. We have a second motion to approve the proposed Missoula Local Government Building Special District Fiscal Year 2026 budget. We have a motion to set a public hearing on December 8th, 2025 for the Tavern and Casino Conditional Use Request at 2315 Clark Fork Lane and refer this item to the Land Use and Planning Committee for presentation and discussion on December 3rd, 2025.
All right. Thank you for reading that list aloud, Claire. That concludes all the items on our consent agenda. I wanted to open it up to the public to see if any members of the public have any comment on the consent agenda, any item on the consent agenda. All right, I'm not seeing anybody in the room. How about online? I'm not seeing anybody online either, so I'll bring it back to council. Do any council members wish to abstain or wish to separate any of the items in the consent agenda? Nope. All right. Looks like we can move forward then with a voice vote when you're ready, Claire.
All right. Voting on this evening's consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to regular business of council committees. Items listed under committee reports were not approved unanimously in city council committees. The chairperson of the standing city council committee will make a motion, and we invite community comment on each item. So there are, there's one item with two motions, so it's two, two separate items under Land Use and Planning Committee Report. And this has to do with the appointment of regular member reappointments and an alternate to the Historic Preservation Commission. to the Historic Preservation Commission. So we don't have any additional staff reports this evening, and I think we can go ahead and just hear the main motion if that's all right, council member.
Yep, I'll make the first one. I move council reappoint regular members Paul Filicetti, Kathy Birkenhauser, and Crystal Herzog to new term beginning January 1, 2026 and expiring December 31, 2028.
Okay, thank you. These are two separate motions, so we'll go ahead and take them separately. I want to bring it back to city council members. Do you have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Counselor Vasika.
Thank you. I'll just comment on both of them. I'm the reason why they are on committee reports. There was a constituent who was concerned about his experience with the Historic Preservation Commission, and I never, ever since the meeting two Wednesdays ago, I went hunting, and I just got back late last night, so we never were able to connect about his reasoning. So since he was very adamant about us voting against this, I just want to, I am always one to say no instead of yes if I don't have all the information. So, and since that's not really going to impact what happens tonight, I believe that these will all pass, so I don't think it's that big of a deal if I vote no on this, so just going to vote no on that, and that's my comments for all, for both of those two motions.
All right. Thank you for providing your comments. Thank you. Any other council comments before we take a vote? All right. Not seeing any, then we can go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item when you're ready, Claire.
All right. Voting on the 10.1.E.B., the First Historic Preservation Commission reappointment for Paul Filicetti, Kathy Birkenhauser, and Crystal Herzog for terms beginning January 1, 2026 and expiring December 31, 2028, beginning with Basara.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Carlinho.
Yes.
Crask.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Sherrill.
Yes.
Vasika.
No.
Anderson.
Yes.
That has nine in favor, one opposed, so that does pass.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the next land use and planning committee report, and that is promoting an alternate member to the regular member on the Historic Preservation Commission. Counselor Nugent.
I move city council promote Eden Strekel from alternate member to regular member on the Historic Preservation Commission with a term beginning January 1, 2026 and ending December 31, 2028.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any members of the public wishing to make comment on this agenda item? All right. I'm not seeing any, and I don't see any online, but I'll give it a second here for somebody to raise their hand if they want to make a comment. All right, not seeing any online either, then Claire, we can take a roll call vote on this agenda item. Oh, all right. Before you do, let me make sure. Any council comment before we wrap up? Nope, I see no hands raised. Okay, great, thank you. We're ready.
All right. Voting on promoting the alternate member to full-time position, beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Carlinho.
Yes.
Crask.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Sherrill.
Yes.
Vasika.
No.
Anderson.
Yes.
And Basara.
Yes.
And that has nine in favor, one opposed, and it does pass.
Okay. Thank you very much. That does wrap up that committee report under regular business, and that wraps up all regular business then. And so, our next agenda item comes back to public comment for items not on the agenda. If folks did not have a chance to speak earlier, and anybody wishes to make public comment on items not on the agenda, you may now. And if you didn't have a chance earlier and wish to address the council, you're welcome to come up now. All right, I don't see anybody coming up here in the audience. And how about online? All right. Not seeing any online either. Okay, that wraps up our public comment for items not on the agenda. And I'll just, I'll just quickly mention that we're back after a holiday break, and I hope that folks had a restful and peaceful time. I think that many of you have been tracking the efforts that our community has made to help those less fortunate with their Thanksgiving meal plans around this time of the year. And first of all, it's worth celebrating that the Missoula won the Can the Cats contest, so we beat Bozeman when it comes to raising food for our food banks and food pantries, and that is fantastic. So congratulations to everybody that contributed, however you did, whether that was through canned food, or dried foods, or cash to food pantries that often make bulk purchases. So that was really excellent and wonderful to see. And I want to acknowledge that Thanksgiving is a complex holiday, and often, especially for our indigenous neighbors, and, you know, recognizing that the city of Missoula is on the homelands of our Salish and Kootenai tribal members and other tribal communities that have called these ancestral homes. And, you know, I wanted to share a bit of a story that I thought was such a kind of a making lemonade out of lemons, which was that when speaking with the tribal council a few weeks ago, and just visiting around some partnership opportunities and ways we're working together, afterwards, somebody that is managing the family shelter up in Pablo pulled me aside and asked if we had any excess supplies left from the Johnson Street Shelter when that shelter closed down. And the Missoula Redevelopment Agency, the city of Missoula, has a policy that we deconstruct buildings rather than just throw buildings into the garbage, which is a fantastic practice in terms of meeting our zero waste goals. Well, Heritage Timber, who is the contractor doing this work, has been just an outstanding community partner in working with a lot of different nonprofits and two tribal nations to get them excess supplies and materials that were in that building and not needed by the Pavarello Center, who had moved the items that they needed out of that building when it was closed at the very beginning of September. And so, I'm really happy to report that the Confederated Salish and Kootenai tribe came down and picked up some lockers and some garbage cans and some other things, because they have a family shelter, but they really needed to separate women with children, and they needed a small space, and they needed to furnish it. And so, they were able to do that with some of the supplies. But the other thing that is such a, just a thing that I wanted to share with folks, and there was a Facebook post that we shared on recently too, is that Heritage Timber coordinated a small fundraising effort to pay for six box trucks of items to bring mattresses and furnishings over to the Crow Tribe, over to the Crow Nation. The Crow Nation also has a shelter that they need to furnish. They did, they could not afford to bring those items over to where they're located, and so our contractor, Heritage Timber, did that, did that work on behalf of all of us. And so, I think it's just really incredible. In addition to Hope Rescue Mission and other organizations that, the Salvation Army, YWCA, Superthrift, a number of organizations that also received some materials out of the Johnson Street Shelter. So just wanted to report that, that that's one of the ways that we can continue to take actions to work together in terms of our commitment to strengthening our relationships with everybody, but in particular, our diverse communities, including our tribal neighbors. And then, I also wanted to report a while ago, it's not even on our homepage anymore, but something that came out of the storm of July of 2024 is, just so folks know, we have an accelerated roofing permit, and hopefully nobody needs this this time of the year. But one of the things that we were able to learn as part of that process was how to get a roofing permit done, and done in a hurry, right? You need to get your roof fixed, and so we're able to turn that around in a matter of days, and I just wanted to report that out to you. So if folks ever come to you with that concern or question, it's just some of the ways that we're continuing to try to improve the efficiency and timeframe of our permitting process. So I know that a roof permit is not a full subdivision or a multifamily project, but we're working at it. So I just wanted to share those couple pieces of good news, and obviously, the snow has fallen here in the valley, so this is a reminder to us all to be safe out there. Take a few more minutes, just drive a little slower. It can benefit us all. So with that, I'll conclude my communications from the mayor, and I'll turn it over to general comments of city council members, and I will start with you, President Sherrill.
Thank you. So tonight is the last meeting that we have with our colleague, Ms. Vasika. If we've, for those of you that have been tracking it because she was appointed, then we put the newly elected person in, and we are going to be doing that this Friday. But I just wanted to say how much I've enjoyed working with you through the years, and, you know, as we, I've said often, we don't agree on a whole lot of things, but when we do agree, we're both able to cross the aisle, and I've just, I've always appreciated that about you. I think it's a great example of what can be done even when you disagree on many things. And I think that you have always wanted what's best for this community, even if I didn't agree the way you wanted to get there. I have found you to be an honest colleague. You've been reliable. You have been transparent. You have been, you've done this job with integrity, and you should be really proud of what you've done in this seat. I know that you have worked well with all of your colleagues, and you have been on a council that politically generally has not agreed with you. But we've still liked you. I still like you. I just, I really have appreciated your personality and how you've gone about doing your job. I hope we still go have lunch, and I really hope that you come to the Christmas party because we would still, we'd still like to see you, and we can just debate topics at lunch after that. But thank you for your service to the community and to your ward, and again, just I've appreciated serving with you, and we got on council at the exact same time we did those forums together and tried to figure out what we were doing in this job, and so that was a long time ago. So thank you, Sandy.
Thank you very much for your comments, counselor. Appreciate that. All right, Counselor Farmer.
Yeah, I would just echo a lot of what my colleague just said, and Sandy, I think when I first got on council, you took me to lunch, and we both laughed about a lot of similar experiences growing up, being kind of country kids, and I really appreciated that about you, and I would agree that, I really appreciate that we can disagree, that you're still really respectful and cordial, and still someone that I could call in a time of need, and I think that that's pretty huge to be able to say about someone. So thank you for your sacrifice. I know that this is a huge sacrifice to take away from family and friends, and I think I agree you should be really proud of the service that you've given your community. So thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Farmer. All right. And Counselor Vasika.
Vasika. But, I mean. That happens a lot.
What are you talking about? Sorry. Counselor Basara.
That happens. Yeah, I would echo my colleague's sentiments about you, Sandra. I know that we haven't seen eye to eye on many things, but I really appreciate it, and will always appreciate you, your convictions, and you standing by your values, and always doing your homework, and knowing when to compromise without sacrificing your values. So I appreciate that, and thank you for the many, many hours you have given to the community. I know it's hard when you have kiddos and families, so thank you. I also wanted to mention that I have become a fan of the peaks and valleys that our mayor puts out for the community, and, you know, I think it's a fun way to communicate accomplishments and some of the challenges that we face as that community in a social media platform, if any, so thank you.
All right on. I appreciate that. Counselor Basara, thank you. Thank you.
I'll pass tonight. No, I'm just kidding. Sandy, I'm going to jump on and just say how much I've appreciated getting to know you and learning from you. And most recently, the conversations that we've had have challenged, I think, some of the worldviews that I have, and I just want to thank you for that. So go be with your family. Thank you so much for your service to our city, and yeah, I really appreciate everything you've contributed over your years.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Nugent.
All right, I'm going to talk about you second. But first, I do want to remind everybody that we are in the middle of the final stages of Phase One of Code Reform, and that is at the planning board right now, so there's another meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock and potentially Thursday as well. There's also another round of just Q and A in land use and planning this Wednesday, I believe around 3 o'clock. Actually, 3 o'clock is probably when the code reform stuff will start. There's also an informational item on some polling that Pro Housing Missoula did around this issue, and I decided to invite them in to talk about it because they submitted public comment to the planning board citing some of their polling data, and I thought some of you council members might want to actually hear from the pollster and discuss how they, you know, what type of questions they asked and what some of the cross tabs are to determine if that, you know, is relevant comment to you or not. So that is an informational item on Wednesday. No endorsements or anything like that, just for your, for your, you know, mound of data to consider during this code reform conversation. Sandy, I have enjoyed serving with you. I appreciate quite a few things. I'm going to miss somebody telling us what each holiday actually stands for. I think that's great. It's a good reminder in public service what public holidays are noted for. I also think you may be the only council member who ever knows if I'm on Talk Back and wants to discuss certain things that I might have said or not said, and whether we agreed with them or not. But I will, I will say that, you know, I think President Sherrill may have mentioned it, but there's a group of people in this community who feel you were their voice on council, and I think you took that seriously, and I think you should be proud of that for the, for the time that I've served with you. You always responded to that charge and made sure that whether you were going to be in the minority or not, if you felt something needed to be brought up, you brought it up, just like tonight when I had to read, you know, appointments to the Historical Preservation Commission, because, you know, somebody reached out to you and made a case for it. And I think that that is something in public service that we should all strive for, is being willing to, you know, go against the majority when you feel it's necessary, and I think that's something that you can take away and be very proud of. So, you know, I think you look back on these six years, and you should feel that you accomplished what you said you'd accomplish when you ran and brought that voice forward. So thanks, and it's been, it's been a privilege to serve with you.
Thank you, Counselor Nugent. Counselor Crask.
I would echo what folks said. Thank you for serving our community, Sandy, and also thank you for being a great person to run for city council with, to get to go to all the forums with you and get to learn from you in that way was just really helpful to hear your perspective and to be a part of that process with you, and it was long and hard, and you made it really enjoyable and thoughtful, and I'm really grateful to the different perspectives that you bring to the table, from here on city council to also just that experience and to every day in Missoula, and I'm really, I'm sad that I only got to serve with you for a few weeks. I feel lucky that I got to serve with you for a few weeks and to sit next to you and get to pick your brain, and I'm looking forward to seeing you more around Missoula, too.
Thank you. All right.
All right, thank you. Well, councillor Vasika, we've got a couple of comments after this, but why don't, why don't we hear from you next?
Thank you. I didn't want to cry, but apparently I'm a sap. It has been a roller coaster of the six years. I remember President Sherrill and I, we got elected together and riding in that bus, going to all the different departments, learning like, oh my gosh, what have we gotten ourselves into? We know nothing, apparently. And it's, it's a big learning, it's a big learning experience. I actually wrote down some notes because I didn't want to forget anything because I knew I might get a little emotional. Serving on this council really, really has been one of the biggest honors of my life. Six years ago, I started out as a newlywed in my twenties, curious about why property taxes were so high in Missoula when I was looking to buy a house. And I said, somebody should do something about this. So I put my name on the ticket and won by 12 votes. And my life trajectory has changed dramatically. I was not expecting to go into public service and I'm very happy that I chose, that I did. And the voters chose me to do it. I now, six years later, have two beautiful children, loads of memories, loads of frustrations, some successes, and a lot of friendships with all of my colleagues in past and present. And I wanted to thank each and every one of you for molding my mind view in each unique way. From day one, my priority has been very simple, to be a responsible steward of our taxpayers' dollars and to make decisions that respect the hard earned money of the people that we represent. And as I end my time on council, I can proudly say, and apparently there's some concessions from everybody, so thank you. I can proudly say that I did everything that I could, that I believed in, and I'm proud that, and I'm actually really proud that my attempts were seen by Helena and was very honored to be on the Governor's Property Tax Force, another success that I had no idea would happen in my life. One of the things that I will remember most is the collaboration with everyone. We don't always agree and we aren't supposed to always agree. But time and time again, we've proved that good ideas don't belong to any one side. And we listen to each other and we focused on solutions instead of differences. And that's when we made the biggest process, the greatest progress. There were moments when we surprised each other, moments when we learned from each other and moments that we realized that we're all just trying to do right by our community. And I hope that that continues long after today. Please remember that tax dollars, even tax increment financing dollars and federal grant dollars are all tax dollars that come from us, the community. And just think of that with every financial decision going forward and always, always try to view things from another perspective. Thank you, everyone, for trusting me, for laughing with me and sometimes laughing at me, challenging me and allowing me to serve. It truly has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I'm so grateful for every moment and I actually am looking forward to being way less stressed out all the time. So thank you, everyone.
Well deserved. Thank you, councillor Vasika. Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too have two things, so just really quick. I wanted to draw attention to a recent retirement at the PD. Sergeant Mark Putty retired. You might recall he was in charge of the Reserve Program, one of many responsibilities he had. But the Reserve Program here and his time here being one of them. So during his retirement, I offered him appreciation on behalf. I told him, not often that I feel comfortable saying on behalf of everybody on council, but I said, on behalf of everybody on council, we appreciate, you know, your service here, you know, for, you know, providing security that he does here. 14 years in the police department, nearly 30 years altogether. He starred with the sheriff's office and worked over in Western Oregon for a number of years before returning to Montana and served 14 years here at the PD. He was a field training officer, so inspired and mentored new officers, very many new officers are in department. And his legacy will carry on in that way. So it's a loss for PD, a loss for the city, but a great officer. And I wish him well in his retirement and welcoming him to retirement. And then of course, you know, councillor Vasika, you know, a lot's already been said here that, you know, I of course agree with. But, you know, I thank you so much for, you know, being an inspiration to me. I think back to, it was late 2020, it was about five years ago this month, in fact. You know, I had this crazy idea to, you know, run for city council and, you know, reached out to different folks, reached out to Jesse, John, and, you know, eventually, you know, soon after, you know, we met at his office. And especially at first meeting, man, I was still an employee of the city. So here I am, an employee with the city and, you know, meeting with three council people I never really, you know, met before. And I was just as nervous as all get out, being in a room with them and just, you know, just struggling to breathe. But, you know, right away, you know, started talking about the agenda, the agenda that was coming up. And, you know, right away you talk about, you know, your point of view on whatever the issue happened to be. And, you know, without hesitation, you know, just turned to me and asked me, well, what say you, Bob, about this? Or what's your opinion on this? And, you know, just right away, you know, made me feel, you know, more at ease of being able to, you know, have conversations and talk more about city issues and, you know, our agreements and disagreements. And certainly, time on council here, I like to think we've agreed much more than we've disagreed. But, you know, it set a course for me, my time here, you know, with this body. And I think back, you know, right in 2021, didn't work out for me that year, but eventually it did work out. And, you know, my, my two years here on council, you know, working with you on some important issues, you know, with sidewalks, urban camping, budget and, you know, the things that you mentioned about, you know, fiscal responsibility, you know, your mantle for that, for, you know, individual freedoms, individual liberty, individual responsibility. You know, I know our values you hold dear, you know, values I hold dear. You know, but by the same token, you know, the thing I really admired a lot about you was just, you know, this idea, I don't know if it was Shakespeare or who, but the idea of, you know, to thine own self be true. And you were always that. I mean, you were true to your values. You didn't waver. There was no trying to be all things to all people on any given issue. You know, you saw an issue or you proposed, made a referral, you know, you stated your reasons, you know, one way or the other. And, you know, you let the chips fall where they may. And I really appreciated that. But I also appreciated, you know, whenever we've had, you know, tough conversations here amongst the horseshoe, and there have been some tough ones, particularly on some referrals with accountability or what have you, or budget. You know, some real passionate conversation, but at the end of it, for you, it was like water off a duck's back. It was, you know, get back, you know, just, you know, unfazed whatsoever with, you know, amongst your colleagues here. And, you know, I look at that and, you know, that's something I have to be mindful of. And, you know, I need to redouble my efforts and, you know, being mindful of that mindset to have the tough debates. But when it's all said and done, that, you know, we're 12 people here working for, you know, the betterment of all the citizens of Missoula. And, you know, it's right that we bring our own perspectives as you have, as I do, as everyone else here has. But, you know, when decisions are made to, you know, move on from that point. So, you know, I just say to you, you know, thank you, you know, for what you've done for the past six years, but thank you for being there to, you know, help set my path, mentor me and get me, you know, to where I am now with this body. And I, somehow or another, I suspect we haven't heard the last of Sandra Vasika in one way, shape or form in, in, in the local arena. So, you know, I, I hope, you know, once you get the blood of public service within you, be it, you know, police, be it as an elected official, you know, it's hard to, you know, go cold turkey on that. So I think in some way, shape or form, you know, we're going to continue in some way. But again, I just really thank you.
All right, thank you, councillor Campbell. Councillor Anderson.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. I also have two things and I will talk about Ms. Vasika second. But wanted to send my condolences to our council friend and colleague Gwen Jones on the passing of her father. Today was his memorial service. And Bill Jones lived 93 years. And his service this morning was pretty remarkable because the underlying themes through all the stories was just the gleefulness in which he embraced life, the generosity of his, you know, the, in which he, you know, shared what he had with others and his generosity of spirit as well as, you know, his material possessions, a call to service and just the importance of community and how, you know, at the end of his life, so much was attributed to the fact that he lived such a full and happy life because he stayed in connection with his community. And folks went out of their way to make sure that he was still included even in the latter part of his years when getting around wasn't so easy. And so it was just a really good reminder of a life well lived. And may we all be so lucky to, you know, live as wonderful and fulfilling and robust of a life as him and to have so many people, even at 93, be there to celebrate your life and to have a loving family and a community that really cared. So I know that there's been a lot on Ms. Jones's plate and with him as he's been ailing these last several months, but it was a true celebration of a life well lived and I was honored to be able to be there, to participate in that. So, and then obviously, Ms. Vasika, Sandra, for wanting to acknowledge all of their great work. I'm last, so I'm doing cleanup duty here. So so many good things have been said, all of them are true. You know, I was, when you, when the time came to nominate to break the tie, which who, I mean, who knew you'd get that, you know, point in history as well? One of the things I said that night was that you have a true North Star and you stick to it. Mr. Campbell referenced that as well. And I just think that that in today's age is really hard to maintain, but I think it really spoke to who you are as a person. And it made you a great colleague because even though we may not have always agreed on things, I always felt like if you gave me your word on what you felt was going to be, how you were going to vote on something, that that, I could take that to the bank. And you were transparent and you were willing to collaborate and compromise, which is, I think, a huge thing, especially in today's society, that compromise is actually how you get good things done. And you were always willing to, you know, kind of dig in, learn something new, see things from the other side. But yet at the end of the day, you stuck to your North Star and I can do nothing but respect that. And, you know, I, and also I just want to thank you for being a truly kind person. You started off with no kids, you now have two kids, you juggled so much. And there, you have at moments in time when you had no need to have really taken the time to, you know, call and let me know about family announcements that you were about to make. And, and we've shared some, you know, trials and tribulations. And you, you didn't have to do any of that. And because you did, I think it really is a testament to who you are as a person and the character that you embody. And hopefully you will still those, and those two cute little ones you have. And it has been a pleasure serving with you, having you as my vice chair on public safety and health. And I will miss having you on council. So, but I know our paths will cross again soon and I wish you all the luck in raising your family and whatever else may come your way.
All right, thank you, councillor Anderson. And we have Daniel Carlino, councillor Carlino, you're online if you wish to make any comments this evening. Is he on? Couldn't tell, he was at the, perhaps councillor Carlino's left the meeting. Okay, looks like he has. Then, then I will wrap up by saying that I cannot let this moment go by by also thanking you, councillor Vasika, for a wonderful working relationship and representation of our community. It's been a sheer pleasure and joy to work together. I know I've said this before, and one of the things that has been something that I've deeply respected about you is your commitment to your values and to an open mind and a, a learning mindset. And you've had, you have a growth mindset when on various issues, you have had your mind changed on an issue where you voted opposite of what you thought you were going to vote and you articulated that. And I think that is very valuable. I think it's very valuable because ultimately, you know, what you heard from everybody's comments tonight is like, we are all community members that have stepped into the role of elected officials. And we're learning a tremendous amount in these roles where you hear different perspectives or information that, that may cause you to make a different decision. And you weren't afraid of doing that. And I think that shows real leadership and something that, a lot of integrity. So thank you for that. And the other thing that I have to say is, and I know I shared this with you over the phone, is that, man, I was really proud that I got your vote this year on the, on the budget. I felt like that was something that, you know, we worked hard to develop a budget that not only improved the public safety and health of our community, we met a number of goals. We found ways to expand our street department maintenance crew by not using tax dollars and, and really relied on less and less property taxes to be able to pass a robust budget that still is very conscientious of the impact to property owners. And so I was really proud of that moment because I know when you had said, I don't know that I can ever support a budget that has any tax increases and I can understand, you know, your perspective and the challenges that our constituents face. So thank you for that moment of glee for me because I feel like that. We really did hammer out a lot of challenging situations together during the budget cycle. And, and I think that, that our community is better off for it. So thank you and thank you for your service. And I know this won't be goodbye, but we'll see you in the next chapter for sure. Absolutely. Okay, so with that, that does wrap up our city council meeting for the first of December, 2025. Again, want to encourage everybody to be safe out there and we'll adjourn our meeting at 7:10 PM.